Test, test, test. Test, test, test. Testing one two, test. Testing one two. Test, test, test.
...
Recording in progress.
Recording in progress.
I don't know, about a hundred on buckets and then two hundred on packets.
It's not totally cheating.
I'd like them all to be on Mac.
The yield is gonna be fifty percent or so, right?
And lettering, up towards riches in Lake, he had twelve thousand halves, two and a half inch line, it's stainless tanks. That thing would surge, it's long like twenty gallons of sap and every time it's, it's gonna surge. His boiler he bought out of Canada, he built the building like, like for this room for the boil burn. He said it burns sixteen gallons of diesel an hour.
So he had a steam burner?
Yeah.
Yeah, those steam burners are amazing.
He goes, once that thing's running, he goes, there's a gallon of syrup coming out every ten minutes.
Yeah, two hundred gallons.
He said it was a lot more fun when he did it in his garage.
Exactly.
Job now.
Okay.
It's like a long thing, once he comes to job, you know, way less fun.
Welcome to this regular meeting of the Reedfield Select Board. It is Monday, March tenth. I'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. You would join me for the pledge?
The Republicans to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a short agenda tonight and we'll go through as quickly as possible, but doing our due diligence. The first item on the agenda is twenty-five oh seven six, regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second?
I'm gonna amend it to the couple of things that we fixed.
Yes. Were they fixed and put in the packet?
They're not in the packet.
The packet was original.
The corrections are not?
Right.
Okay, so, um, do you wanna make that with the amendments?
With the amendments of the English grammar professors on the board have added.
That was both of us. I said professors. I know, I heard. Um, does your second apply to that, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hey, we're gonna do this right. Seeing none, all those in favor. It is unanimous. The next item is twenty-five oh seven seven, the warrants thirty-five to thirty-six, and is that you, Steve?
That is. So.
There are new ones up here too, so.
Yeah, the ones for next time, right?
Yep.
They're for next one. Yes, but we have all signed those, so now they're over there for you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, so, um, this is thirty-five and thirty-six, and it's a baby one, relatively speaking. Payroll was twenty-four thousand nine twenty-two and vendors were forty-three thousand nine oh five, or sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. All pretty straightforward stuff we see a bunch of times, the bigger ones, Archie's Holloway stuff for fifty-seven thirty-eight. And, um, two things for assessing David will do, two thousand dollars, that's his normal thing, right? And then twenty-five hundred dollars for the reval, a year ago assessment. And then Mamie, this one play health was eighty-four hundred and seventeen, and New England Salt, thirteen thousand three hundred and fourteen. I really wanna own a salt company, just in my spare time. Oh, and then, then there's, um, thirty-nine hundred and twenty-five for legacy Woodlot Services, and that's the invasive plant work in the town forest that we get reimbursed for. We paid it out and they will be reimbursed for that, so.
So they've already done that work, Eric?
Yes.
Okay.
That was done, it was done last summer. They didn't invoice us until, uh, oh, last summer fall, they didn't invoice us until now, so.
I was wondering if they were out there in their snowshoes doing that, so.
No, it was just a delay, delaying us the bill, which, you know, I don't mind so much. I'll make a motion to approve the warrants as presented to the sum of sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-four cents.
A little louder next time.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. It is unanimous.
A little louder.
Yes, I was scolding Sean for being too quiet for the recording, and I got the look. Okay, we're moving on to select board communications. Does anyone have anything? We'll move on to the town manager and treasurer's reports.
All right, I'll zip through these. I'll start with administration and finance and the town manager's report. Budget work has been a big part of my life the last month, um, and especially the last week or two has been really heavy. But we're getting to that time of year where we're getting close to the fine tuning of it, not fin as it says in my report, but fine with it. First line, right in the first line, but anyway, that's been a big part of the work over the past month. Technology upgrades also ongoing. My report on the twenty-fourth has covered those pretty well, but we're just continuing on with that effort. We've had at least one and sometimes more GA applications every week over the past month, so that has picked up. But we've been able to offer assistance to most folks that needed. The town was able to avoid making any property foreclosures, so this has been reported before, but I'm really pleased that we were able to work with people and avoid that situation. And then I wanted to announce publicly that Chris Cassiani is retiring. This Friday will actually be his last day. Some of you may have seen the advertising notices, but we're also hiring for his position and a few others, and that includes summer beach and maintenance staff, an AV assistant for Bill. He's great to work with. It's a fun job. So, and it's a good stipend too. And then Cemetery Sexton as well, and we can talk more about why that is a little bit different later. Maintenance and transfer station, several storms over the past month have really kind of run the gamut as far as winter activity goes. We had the nice dry pottery stuff, and then the last one was wet, sloppy, and then we had the windstorm. So we're, we've kind of run through the course and we're probably gonna have a few more by the time it's done, but that has been, um, you know, a a good run for the end of the winter. Hopefully that's it, I'll knock on wood, whatever. But we are getting close to the end of the materials budget. We do have reserves for those type of things, but, um, we're just getting close because we had to use a lot of material this winter. We had several down trees on the last storm. That was last week, Friday, I believe. And I just wanna thank Lee and the fire department for getting out there and clearing that stuff where they could, where they were called out, so that was really helpful. CMP and Lucas Tree, of course, do their bit as well. The roads are posted, and so that means no heavy or overweight vehicles. I believe it's twenty-three thousand pounds. If you, if you're not sure, definitely ask. But what we need to be doing is ensuring that nothing that weighs more than that goes on the roads without either permission for a special reason or which, which can be granted, or for at times when the roads are solidly frozen, mostly in the morning. But with what we're spending on roadwork, I do not wanna see our roads get tacoed in the spring. I mean, there's inevitable wear, but one overloaded truck, one excavator moving at the wrong time can wreck a road. So it's very, very important that we all are aware of that, and call me if anybody shows up or if you see anybody on the roads, so we can deal with it. We warn people, we tell them, hey, you know, this is not right, we're not gonna go right to a fine or anything, but depending on how egregious it is, I guess, but it's a big deal. We did meet with engineers to kind of catch up to date on the church road sidewalk. The first phase is wrapped up essentially, and now we're moving on to the right-of-way process, which basically means that's when we talk to the landowners, if we have to negotiate any temporary easements to access areas for work. That'll be happening next, and that takes twelve to eighteen months, so that'll be happening pretty quickly to get that going.
Twelve to eighteen months is quickly?
I guess I'll say that's DOT's speed. We, we can probably do a little bit better than that. I'm hoping six to twelve, but, you know, we'll, we'll see. But DOT was optimistic that we might do a little bit better than their time. We received preliminary estimates for the salt sand shed, and I'm not even sure honestly what to do with these at this point, of one point one to one point two five million. I don't know how realistic that is, and I say that with a bit of caution because I've been wrong before on project costs. We did get the estimate after the tariffs went into effect, and that has hit concrete pretty hard, so I'm sure that's part of it. But we'll talk more about it in the budget discussions, but it's, it's not a, not a good feeling.
Still a shed, right?
Sixty by one hundred and twenty foot building, so, I mean.
Shed, it's not.
Yeah, oh, I know, I know.
There's no plumbing, no floors.
Steel building.
That's, that's, the one point two five was with timber, the one million was with fabric, with the steel, with the hoop. So I'm guessing that steel would be even.
In the wrong business.
We are all in the wrong business.
But I think that, we'll talk about it more, but my thought on this is that we probably ought to just put it up to bid and find out what it's actually gonna cost about. But that's, that's later on, and, um, yeah, I'm still trying to digest that number.
Yeah.
Cause I just, I just, I just don't believe it. But again, you know, I thought that the fire station was gonna be five hundred thousand, it turned out to be eight, you know, so.
Yeah, but that has plummeted.
Oh, I know, I know.
Sheetrock and insulation and fire suppression.
Supposedly, yeah. But, no, I hear you guys.
I'll dig on that one a little bit too, because I know some, some guys that have built big steel buildings.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, the engineer side of that, how that comes in, but I think they're all, that's all part of the deal when you buy them.
It can be. I mean, but we're talking about foot thick, ten-foot tall concrete walls. So there's a bit of work that goes into the footings for those and the forest.
Ten-foot concrete walls?
Yeah. So in order to get the same amount of material that's in our giant dome right now, because we're making a square, which is what most people do these days, sixty by one hundred and twenty gets us about twenty-four hundred, twenty-five hundred cubic yards, which is just about what we have in that rate now. Or not right now, but what we can put in around one. So you lose some efficiency when you go to a square, but then again, the, the, the physical structure is a lot more traditional. But anyway, Dave, if you have any thoughts, if you could talk to some people, I, I still think it's, it's crazy. I still think that, you know, half a million is probably on the high end, but the prices are just going berserk and people are not certain what's gonna happen, so.
Tell you what, we'll all go together. We'll put it up, we'll charge you like six hundred thousand.
It sounds like a plan.
We'll all get a great deal out of it.
Just building it like the old days, you know? Doesn't work anymore.
Just a barn raid.
Right, right.
Yeah, but no, when you got a sixty-foot span, the short way, it takes some, takes some doing, so. But anyway, that's, that's, I just wanted to put that there publicly and say how disappointed I am with it, but we'll, we'll have to work on it.
We're gonna talk about it a little more in a minute, right?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
And so then, final note on transfer station is that it's peripheral, I guess, but the RSU is moving forward with a trial composting program at the elementary school. You know, I met with Jay Sherrett and he's, he seems to be on board, and if we can help with that, I want to. That's really all I wanted to say on this point is that it can save them money. It's a, it's a good way.
Which saves us money.
Saves us money, and so it's a good thing. Moving on to community services, Reedfield U is happening. There's a ton of stuff going on. Sean can pitch his business, I'm not gonna do it for him. But we have lots of other community activities as well going on with Reedfield U, and I encourage residents to try something out. It's not just education, it's community building, and I've had a lot of discussions the last couple of weeks with people who say, where's everybody in town? We have all the same people doing the same things, and we wanna get people out. So I'll just encourage again, people to try to do those events and meet, meet new people, come on to the community. The Low Power FM Radio Group has conducted a few site visits, and we did receive our, our call sign. So we will be WRCP LP, which just stands for low power. And it doesn't really mean anything. We thought maybe Reedfield Community Programming for the acronym, but in all honesty, it was one of about five call signs that wasn't already taken by somebody else, so. They did have WDyr, which I thought about for a split second, but I thought that might be much, but anyway. Frequency's ninety-four five, and if anybody has an interest in helping out or running a show, we are gonna be doing the emergency programming and emergency response piece, but backfilling, we're gonna have community programming, so.
And is this gonna take place sooner than the first estimated two-year?
Yeah, so we should be able, I, I think if things go well, have a, have a soft open sometime in the next three to four months, and maybe have a formal launch around Heritage Days.
Cool.
Have you seen any of the designs for the logo yet?
I have, yeah.
So good.
They're, they're looking at a loon with a little transmitter, yeah, it's, it's kinda cool, yeah. But I think it's exciting that people are interested and engaged in this, right? Cause I mean, I, you know, logos and all that stuff, I look at it, I'm like, eh, you know, it's a logo, it's cool. But people are excited about it, and that's, I think, really important to get people engaged. And I think this will be a good, also a good opportunity for people to get together in the community and talk about things. And then final swim lessons, it's looking likely. Jen, oh yeah, there you go, yeah.
Bill, can you zoom in on Sean's laptop?
Not Sean.
Not showing?
Just the laptop.
Okay.
Anyway, we can go back to it, or I'll put it on the website, but any of that, swim, swim lessons are looking like they're gonna happen, and that's also another exciting thing for the community.
It's been like a decade.
Well, it's not.
It's, it's been a long time since we had a full program.
Yeah.
We had a trial run during COVID, and that, that was, that was okay.
Two years in a row?
I think it was just one year.
What is in a row?
It was one year in a row. All right, so treasurer, any questions on the town manager's report? I do wanna get through this.
Sounds good.
All right, so treasurer's report. This one's really easy. Things are actually looking very, very normal. We have the check reconciliation completed at the end of February. Our accounts are in balance. We did roll over one SEDAR, or we will be, I've already signed the, the We did roll over one SEDAR or we will be. I've already signed the document for it. But four point three percent, which is about at least a quarter point, if not more higher than I thought we were gonna be at this time. So bonds and CDs and things like that are still really good investments right now because the the basic Fed rate is still fairly high. And that's probably gonna stay there for for six months to a year. And that's actually helping us out with the budget later. I'll talk about that. But anyway, we we rolled that forward, so that's continuing. And then we spent a lot of time on the budget in February and March. There are a number of important things that have happened and I'll talk about those later in the meeting, but our budget committee meeting is scheduled for March nineteenth. It was originally last Wednesday, but we had conflicts and people were sick with COVID and whatever else. And so we had to reschedule that, but budget committee will be meeting on the nineteenth for anybody that has an interest. We're getting the crunch time, decision time. So if you wanted to pick a time to get involved, this is a good time to do it. Basically, month of February looks good. Transfer station fees are down a little bit. But other things are up. Real estate is up in part because the taxes are up. But that's that's, you know, in part, you know, because of multiple things, school, town and county. The expenses are very much in line for the year. I think we're in a good spot. The one thing I do worry about is winter road materials and possibly winter repair work, depending on how things shape up this spring. But we've done okay. But the it was again, it was a hard winter, so.
Was there any other road damage other than North Road?
Um, not. We had North Road, Church Road, Loose Road and Plains Road. These went across the town. It wasn't all in sequence, but it was kind of every road on that on that north side of town had something down at one point. Not all bad, but at least definitely some work there. Something else I wanted to mention about that, but any event, oh, we did have some from that rainstorm. We had some pretty bad washouts on a couple of stretches. It's just really hard when you get the snow melts down and it freezes rocks solid in the culverts. And we had to talk with, oh, go ahead, Dave.
Nowhere for it to go.
Yeah, exactly. But I do want to talk to the road committee and the select board over the next several months about trying to work with people to get their snow out of the right of way. Because there, every problem we had was the result of snow that wasn't pushed back far enough. They got it just off pavement and dropped it right on top of the culvert and it just froze up solid and we couldn't do anything about it. Or we could, but it took a lot of effort. So anyway, I want to talk about that and if there's any way to maybe, I don't say legislate, but encourage people to push it back further. And that's something we can work on. I don't know, probably just asking people when we see it starting to pile up. But it wasn't a bad enough winter that that had to be that way. So anyway, that's my treasurer's report.
Once it piles up, it's harder to move, so better to get them to move it at the beginning and all year. Any questions? Okay, great job. Thank you very much. We don't have anything for boards and committees. Public communications, there's no one present in the room. We have two folks online. Is to either of you wish to contribute anything? I know it's not public time, but I'll just give you guys a quick update on the Kennebitt County budget. So our fourth meeting is this Wednesday. For some reason volunteered to be the recording secretary and that's taking up a whole lot of the time. But we're doing things a lot differently than it was done last year. So everything that's been notated by the department heads who are presenting, for many of them, it's the first time they've done that. It had been just the county administrator doing it. So we're getting a lot more information from the people who actually run each of these departments. So I'm notating down all of the things that they're saying are important and why there was an increase and what it is they're asking for. And we're gonna record all of our motions because evidently that was one of the big problems they had last year when they first came out with like a forty percent increase to the towns, was that things hadn't really been recorded. And so three or four different people all thought something different happened and they just kind of picked one of them. And I guess it became very confusing, so we're not gonna have that problem this year. But wow, the numbers are high. I shared them with Eric. We talked about it a couple of times. And I think the numbers I saw today, it's like a fifty-six percent increase overall to the towns from the county.
So is it is it okay to ask the question of why they need that much two years in a row? Like, last year is also very high.
Right, well, they I think they started out in the forties last year and they ended up in the twenty-ish.
Which is high.
Which is high. There are a whole lot of reasons for it, which you understand as you go. But I I think a lot of things were let go for a number of years. It could be like a decade kind of thing and they're trying to play catch up. But you can't catch up in like one or two years. You gotta have a plan and and do it gradually. Like a lot of their salaries are way behind where they should be and we kind of took care of that during COVID. When we raised the lower end, we also raised everybody else. And so the impact has been a steady increase in Reedfield, whereas they really didn't do anything. And now all of a sudden, they're way behind. So I can tell you that the general feeling from the people who speak on the committee, which is all people from towns in the county, are what are we gonna cut? Not are we going to cut? So
That sounds good. I would encourage that, given that number. That's crazy.
Yeah, and I don't really understand all of that, so hopefully I will by the time we get All right, so we can move on. The next item, we just did that, is old business, looking at the budget.
So I was gonna suggest that maybe we take the the new business and some of the other old business that relates to roads and and that out of sequence, because I think we do have at least one person online that's here for the paving.
Oh, let's do the paving things first. Does anybody know what page this is in here?
Thirty-four.
I'm using my phone here.
If you want to look at the
Thirty-four, okay. So this is paving first, yes? Okay. So the last we left it, you were going to do some investigating on comparing the proposals because we had looked at these previously.
Yes, we had looked at these previously. I mean, we did some additional work. We reached out and got answers to several questions, including where their material was coming from, who was doing their their reclamation work, what what equipment they'd be using for re-centering the the road, the center line and the the vertical and horizontal alignment. Both of those things. We asked about references. We asked how they came up with their material lists and their estimates. So we really did a pretty, a pretty deep dive into this. And what we found were a few things. We also tried to sort out some of the differences in volumes. And we've been able to rationalize that, I believe. So altogether, what we found was that most of the contractors that were low enough to be considered in this, all of them actually were working with Manzer Fine Grade for the reclamation work, which was a big portion of the lane road repairs. And also a big question about how they were gonna manage that. So Manzer was involved with that for everybody. And so that was one big question. Everybody's having their material coming from similar distances. They're all, excuse me, about thirty to forty minutes away. Some are going to Auburn or Windsor, excuse me, and some are going to Augusta. So we went through, the the things that stood out to me were references. We we have worked with mainly paving in the past and they were good then. And their list of references has gotten even better since since we worked with them. The the other low bid that we considered, there were two actually. One was Spencer Group and the other was Allstate. Allstate we considered because they're so well known. They were close enough that we said, well, geez, maybe there's a difference in subcontractors or something there. But what we didn't really find was much much difference there. They're all using the same sub for the reclamation work. And then when we looked at volume estimates, we felt that they weren't as precise as some of the other bidders. So those things kind of moved it down a little bit and it was between effectively Spencer Group and and mainly paving. And so following this review of of the the costs based on what we believe the actual volumes will be, not the ones that were bid, there's not a huge difference here. I mean, we're talking like, you know, one percent again, not a lot of difference there. But our recommendation, Matt, myself, is that we would go with mainly paving. The net difference is probably around forty-four hundred dollars, four to five thousand dollars, depending on what the, you know, bottom line numbers are, more than than Spencer would be. But Spencer, we just, we'd never heard of them and they did have references, but they weren't really that close. And the type of work they've done just hasn't, doesn't seem to be the same scale or volume, I guess, that what we're seeing from mainly paving. So the the total on that would be using our numbers, roughly four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So what I would like to recommend is that the board authorized us to work with mainly paving with an amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars without without prior consent.
That number is different than the one in our packet?
Yeah, so these, the ones in the packet are the numbers that would be there if if we went with the volumes that they estimated. But again, it's not a big difference because everything kind of comes out in the wash when you get to this scale. At least that's what we saw. There were, you know, twenty foot differences on on maybe the the length of the road. Somebody might have gone twenty-one feet instead of twenty-two or vice versa on the width of a road. So we really did not have major differences. But that's a good thing that gives us confidence that we will be right in that range. And again, these numbers, having two that were very, very close on the low end and having one that was just a little bit higher, it's it's a good indication. So I feel comfortable with this recommendation. I did, I did look at our reserve balances and this this will be tight if we approve other work that needs to happen this year. At the end of this fiscal year, we'll have roughly twenty-five thousand dollars in the paving reserve. We'll, of course, get three hundred thousand coming in on on July one, but it's, you know, we're getting out of the to the end of that ability to buffer with that account. But I'm comfortable we can do it and I don't see any issue or any reason not to do this at the price that was quoted and the scope of work that was presented.
I have just one question.
Sure.
Does this keep us up current on our RMS? Is it RMS?
So Yes, we've gotten away from that a little bit. We're using more of a a tabular table, what you see in the in the capital planning meetings, that list with all the years and all the work. So but yes, this this does keep us on pace for that.
That's what I wanted to. Thank you for knowing my question.
Sure thing.
And I don't have anything different than than you would have said. I see it the same way. As you've said, even even if you added up the differences in materials, it's four, five thousand dollars. One way or the other, depending on who estimated it right, who estimated it wrong. I would go along with exactly the way you said.
Want to make a motion for that?
I will make a motion to accept the bin for paving. Can I generalize it like that? For mainly paving, do we have a allow not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand? Without approval?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Vote. I do want to ask if Jamie's on, if he wants to speak at all. I'm not sure if he is or not. He did have an interest. Mainly paving, Jamie Ward.
Yes. Hey, Eric, how are you?
Hi, doing well, Jamie. So I hadn't spoken to you before this for good reason, but we've we've definitely exchanged a couple of emails through through Matt Seams as far as those questions. So I just wanted to see if you wanted to add anything about the program and how you think you're gonna approach it.
No, I just wanted to, for one thing, thank you for for going with the motion to go with us. We have done work in the past for you guys and I hope we've done it well. And we absolutely, this is stuff that we've done for for many other towns. So we're, I'm super comfortable with Nate Manzer for one. And I'm I'm confident that we can do a very good job for you. And by all means, as we're working, please keep us informed if there's any problems, if there's anything that we we need to address as we're working, so everything is is going smoothly. So I hope that I hope that answers your question, Eric, but.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to give you a chance because I knew you were gonna be on and
Yeah, yeah.
Figure I'd make it worth while.
I certainly appreciate it.
Jamie, I'll just respond. It's Catherine, Chair of the Select Board. If you had not done good work for us in the past, we would not be considering your bid. So the fact that we're considering you, yes, you're doing a great job.
Well, I thank you so much again. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? All those in favor is unanimous. Congratulations to mainly paving.
Great. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Eric, this did not include the gravel road work?
It did. So the old business was under twenty-five oh seven four and that's for the
Wasn't there
Yeah, no, that's that was mislabeled. It said paving bid opening, but that's actually gravel roads. But so so page thirty-nine has the gravel work. And this is where things get a little bit interesting. But we we gave the option of having the contractors provide their own materials or having the town buy the materials and having it delivered. We did get, you know, a few bids on this. I would have liked to gotten more, but I think that what we've got is something we can work with. CH Stevenson, local company, well-known, well-respected, came in with with basically the low bid. And what I'm looking at is the 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 cost of having them provide the material. Because they would be providing material that would meet meet our spec out of their own pit. And when I looked at the cost to deliver the material that was provided at nine dollars a ton and then we're nine change and then we're looking at fifteen to sixteen to purchase the material from Pike. They're actually a better value per ton for the material. So my recommendation on this one is twofold, that we we work with CH Stevenson, that we accept their 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 pricing with the the material being provided by them for the gravel that's gonna be going down. But we're not going to be accepting the the calcium chloride portion of this. And that was something I put in as as a wouldn't it be nice kind of thing. But looking at at the relative value versus the cost and the the work involved in installing that, I think it's the best option to just go with a straight rolled gravel surface. That's what we've done with our our regular road work, grading for the roads and it's worked very well. So I think that by having it compacted and compacted well with good quality material, we can forego that piece, save a little bit of money. So
What does that make their quote?
That would make their quote just under thirty-five thousand dollars. I was looking at
Twenty-four ninety-one fifty-five.
Well, so it'd be the twenty-four thousand plus the four hundred and sixty-nine tons that we had estimated for the the material being put down at the twenty-two fifty per ton. So that goes to twenty, ten thousand five hundred and twenty-two, five hundred and fifty-two fifty. So you add that to the twenty-four and we're at around thirty-four thousand three fifty-two. So what I'm looking at is approval to work under those parameters, not to exceed thirty-five thousand without permission.
So who can remember all that to make motion?
He just simplified it. I'll make a motion to accept the gravelware bids for the gay road for CH Stevenson not to exceed thirty-five thousand. Anything else I have to add to that? Oh, without the calcium chloride.
Nice job, you guys. I have a motion in a second. Anything further to Nice job, you guys. I have a motion in a second. Anything further to discuss? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Am I moving along quickly enough?
Yo, I, Dave was. Ready to vote instantly. You slowed him down by about three, three seconds.
We have twenty five minutes left on the agenda, so.
So now we're on the ditching culvert cleaning and replacement edge grading bid opening?
Yes. So this one also was a little bit interesting. We, we had three beds. Again, what would have preferred more, but this is, this isn't that. We had, Cushing is our local contractor that does a fair amount of work for us. He usually comes in quite competitive. This one, it was a bit of a split difference. And the, all in all, the prices were very close. But I would attribute some of the changes, some of the differences in cost to. Probably John and his company having a little bit better read on. The work at hand and having a bit of a cost advantage when it comes to moving materials. So the culvert cleanouts were, were a lot more affordable than the other two vendors. And that really makes a difference. If you add up everything except for culverts. It looks like. The Joe Gamin and son would be the, the low bid. However, when you add in eight, ten or twelve culverts, which is right around in the range where we're thinking we need to be for the work. Even if you get over one or two culverts, it starts to tilt towards John, so. This is, I think, another piece that needs to be done. A lot of this work, over half of it, I'd say fifty to seventy thousand dollars of this is attributable to. Work that needs to be done before we pave. So this is for work on ditching on Beaver Dam. Merritt Moral Road, Lane Road, North Lane Road. So a lot of that adds up. And so my, my. Well, before I get to that piece of it, my recommendation on this is that we go with John Cushing Construction on this and. That we replace culverts as needed, but no more than twelve. So I would think that a cap on this of. I'd just say, let's just say not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars without, without prior approval would do it for me.
I think we should go a hundred and one since it's a hundred and seven sixteen.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Mind the motion guy?
You are.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Cushing Construction. For the amount of do not exceed a hundred and one thousand. Without prior approval.
To do what work?
To do the ditching and shoulder and sand work on all the said roads. In this document.
Only about a dozen.
We just had to say it was for some specific reason, not just we're going to give John a hundred and one thousand.
Concise words of reference to the RF.
I know I had a motion. Was there a second?
Second.
Who wants it? Sean wants it, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Was that quicker? It's unanimous.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for that. This is, this is more money than we originally had thought, however. It's all important work and when you look at the stuff that's happening that is related to the paving, it's just essential. We have to do it. And this is going to draw down our, our road maintenance budget pretty heavily as well. And so what I'm likely going to be doing is shifting some of this. Even though it's, it's technically a maintenance expense. Because it's associated with paving work, I'm looking to have that come out of that paving account so that we can actually balance this out. And not dip into our roads operating reserve, which we do have available, but that's got about forty grand and I'd like to keep that. For things like if we go over on winter road maintenance. In the future, or if this stuff doesn't work out and we need a buffer, there's always that possibility, so. That's my recommendation on that, but we can cross that bridge if we need to.
I'd just like to congratulate you and the road committee for making sure that the. Culverts and the ditching and all of that is done before the road work is done. That's something that we talked about a number of years ago, that we wanted to make sure the order was that way and not backwards. So thank you for all the effort put into making sure that we could afford to do all of that at the same time.
Yeah, thanks. I'll just, I'll just pass that along and say Matt Seams has done an excellent job in the field. Doing the measurements, you know, working with the contractors and all that, so it's been great to have that support. All right.
Let's do the FYI. And then we'll go back to the budget because it's the last thing there. The Kennebec Regional Development Authority warrant, is that first park?
That's first park.
Okay, and so we're just being notified that they're having an annual meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so everybody, they're having an annual meeting and it was signed by our new town clerk.
Yes, her, her name has changed, so everybody make sure you call her by her proper name.
She's not new, but her name is changed.
I've got a good laugh looking at the revenues on this.
Yeah.
I really hope they have a remote option. I've been hounding them about a remote option, so it'll be interesting to see if that is provided or not.
Oh, for K R D A, yeah. Well, and I've been hounding the county commissioners as well, so.
And I made a motion at the meeting last time and it was unanimously supported that we not only. Have Zoom available for the public, but we also record it and post it on the county website.
Well, shoot.
But the county commissioners have to take it up at their next meeting. Which will be after we finish all of our meetings.
And they see, you can do that voluntarily. Come on, that's a, that's an administrative thing, but anyway.
So.
All right, well, anyway.
But progress, we're working on it. All right, so. Budget highlights.
All right, so as I noted, I've been working on this for quite a while and more intensely lately. The last time we met and talked, we talked about the fact that I needed some information to really fully understand the budget. And we just voted on a big chunk of that. Those, all those projects give us a great idea where our spending is. What our reserve accounts look like and what future expenses will likely look like in the next year or two. Because we hadn't done any paving since Church Road and that was two years ago plus, so this is good for us. The prices are more than what we've been used to, but that's just how things are. So that was one piece of information, so we've got that pretty well buttoned down. The other piece of information that I was waiting for that I wanted to have was the. Fund balances from the auditor. And we got those last, I think Wednesday, Thursday, somewhere in that timeframe. And they. Basically did two things. They confirmed a trend. That we are only bringing in around. Two hundred to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Into the undesigned fund on an annual basis. And that's, that's in very large part of the work that we've done policy wise and with budgeting. To really tighten things down, to get as lean as possible. And to encourage people to not put extra in their budget because it would just roll, roll over. So we did a lot of that and it was very successful. And we're at the point now where those, the, the, the money going into the undesigned fund seems to be stabilizing. But at a much lower level than what we're used to, so. The, the number that I saw, I got from the auditors was around, I think, two hundred ten thousand, I think is what we had going in this, this. At twenty twenty four. End of the, end of twenty twenty four, so that was June of last year. So right now, we're, we're in process and we're trying to figure out what things are going to look like going forward, but. What we know is that we are pulling out on a regular basis. More money than we have going into that reserve. And that's, that's okay for a while. And that's what the board has, has wanted to ask us to do. We want to draw down those balances. But once that second piece of information came, became clear. It was, I, I had to look at the budget very carefully. And the first thing I did was, was reduce our use of the undesigned fund. I recommend the reduction there. And the best way to look at this is graphically. And if you looked at that budget summary sheet that I put in the packet. If you go to the page where we have fund balances, what you'll see is that we are drawing down very quickly. Those, those, those funds. And what I'm proposing is that we try to soften that, that landing, so to speak.
Eric, just sorry, are you talking about the committed and unassigned fund balance?
Yes, committed and unassigned fund balances. Page twenty eight, you got it. Sorry, I just was rolling right through. But so we, we've started to tilt down that hill and we're doing a good job. But we, we can't, we can't do. Two things at once. We can't, we can't draw more than we have going in. For very long and we also can't draw down so low that we get below our minimum threshold. By any meaning, meaningful margin or that we, you know, start maybe. Get, having to get into our other reserves to maybe make up a difference, so. I think that if we're mindful of this, if we can take a balanced approach. And what I'm proposing is that we curtail over the next four or five years. The money that we have coming out of that undesigned fund. So that by, say, you know, roughly twenty thirty. We can balance somewhere around a hundred fifty thousand coming in, a hundred fifty thousand going out. That's really where we want to be. We weren't, it wasn't very clear until this last audit came, came in. What was actually happening, we wanted to make sure that we had a, a, a good degree of confidence because this is a big decision. So what I'm looking at with, with the use of these funds. It was, we were at three seventy five, which was actually an increase from last year. But as soon as I saw that number from the auditor, I knew we had to do something different, so. I'm proposing three twenty five, which is a twenty five thousand dollar reduction from last year. And then I'm proposing that we cut it back twenty five or fifty thousand dollars, depending on the year. For the next few years until we get to that balancing point. And there's some hypotheticals out there. There's a lot of things that I don't know about what, what this is actually going to look like. But we'll, without making an effort at this point, we'll find ourselves in. A position of not having enough funds to. Offset the budget without having to raise taxes dramatically. Catherine, yeah?
So am I looking right in the highlighted one for twenty five, twenty six, unassigned use of funds? It says five hundred and twenty five thousand?
Yes, and I'll, I'll get to that in a split second.
Okay.
So what I wanted, I guess, now that you're there, I'll say that those two years. The one, the row above that, that has. The yellow highlighting on most, but not all the columns. That, that's our current fiscal year. We know what the starting balance is. We don't know what the ending balances are. And this is a projection, so the yellow is really just speculation. And so once we get through that, then. You know, the, the next several years are kind of a wild shot in the dark, but. I think we have a lot more confidence knowing that we've tightened things down. It's much more reliable, but it's just a lower level, so. The reason I'm showing five hundred twenty five thousand dollars for fund balance. Is because I'm also recommending at this point that we pull two hundred thousand dollars out of the undesigned fund. To put towards the paving reserve, because if you remember. We're going to have twenty thousand dollars left at the end of this year. We're going to have something, depending on how we schedule the work, three hundred to four hundred thousand coming out. Next year and that math doesn't work unless we've got some buffer in there. We could either bond it or we could take it out of the undesigned fund. I think that we have the capacity to pull that amount out. We might need to do something different in two or three years, depending on how things go, but. For right now, that'll allow us to keep on our paving schedule without borrowing. Which would be a good thing, I think. We could break that up and just pull out a hundred thousand and drop it into the account, but that's kind of semantics at this point. I just wanted to, to note. That I'm recommending that we consider that. And I need to talk to the budget committee more on this and we need to meet, we're meeting on the nineteenth. This will be a big part of our discussion. But what, what's showing there is just the reduction so that we know how close we are to that threshold that we have at two twelve or three twelve, whichever it is. So what, but that doesn't show up in our budget. In our budget, what we're seeing is just the three twenty five. Because the rest of that's a non-tracks tax transfer. It's going from undesigned fund to an assigned fund. So that doesn't have a tax impact, so it doesn't affect the budget.
We still have the same money. It's just in a different place.
Just in a different place with a different purpose.
And where does that leave us at the end of the year with the two twelve, three twelve?
It leaves us right now at about a hundred and five percent.
So a little more than two twelves?
A little bit more than two twelves, yep. But what that means is that over the next couple of years, we're probably going to dip below that hundred percent. Threshold, right? We're going to kind of go below that, but I think that we, we kind of have to. Without having a bigger tax impact than what I'd like to see. So I'm, I'm comfortable because we do have healthy assigned reserves. We're not going to have a cash flow issue, right? We're okay there, but if we got down to fifty percent, then we might have to start worrying a little bit, but. I think that we're going to be able to manage this. And I will be working with the budget committee to kind of fine tune this discussion and this assessment. But I wanted to put it out here, just to say that's where I think we are. And when you take fifty thousand dollars in revenue out of a budget that's already tight, there's tax impacts for that, so.
So does that remove? That chunk? Does that help remove the need to bond this year then for the infrastructure?
Yes.
Yes, to a large degree, not entirely.
So we'd save like four hundred two thousand dollars in principal right there, right?
Well, we would save a, a ten thousand dollars in interest this year and potentially fifty next year. However, that ten thousand this year and fifty next year is tied to the, the salt, salt sand shed. Well, so this is like, it's kind of circular, right, but.
Which we don't have enough money for.
Which we don't have enough money for. Under the current bid, so. At this point, I, I, I'm really just ready to just say, you know. We, we, we're not going to worry about this until we figure out. How to get our overall fund balances stable and, and maybe in five years, we look at it. That building is not going to collapse or fail in five years, but. But our, our biggest time. Issue right now is the municipal association, whether or not they'll pull coverage on it. You know, right now, they, they haven't pulled general liability and I don't believe they will, but that's going to be a question I'm going to have to ask them because I just. That one million number is just, it's crazy. If we're able to put it out to bid and get down to five hundred thousand, then I think we probably ought to do that.
I just can't imagine us spending a million dollars for another building.
I can't either.
This store's salt. I just.
It is. So, but that's a whole nother discussion, but I guess I wanted to just put a flag there and say. There still is that bonding in the, in the warrant this year or in the, in the, in the budget, but. It's a very, the ten thousand dollars is pretty small at this point. But it's all relative, so what I'll say also is that we're at a point where. With municipal revenues and expenditures, every ten thousand dollars. Is, is a one percent change in how much the municipal mill rate is, is, is going up or down, so. A one percent increase in taxes or a one percent decrease over last year is ten thousand dollars, but. What I'll say also on that is after I realized how tight things were, I went and I went through every single line of the budget. And cut where I could. I had to add a little bit here and there. We had to add money for the, the technology piece, six thousand dollars there. But we were able to cut a lot in other areas and be incredibly, I think, lean. But the net result, right now, with all of this being said, is that we're looking at about a nine percent increase proposed on the, on the municipal side. We're not that big. So it's probably only a sixty, seventy dollar impact for the average homeowner, but. It's big enough and it's something I want to think about. But the other thing I want to point out about that. Is that we had thirty thousand dollar increase in ambulance services from Winthrop and dispatch, so there's three percent right there. We lost thirty thousand dollars in revenue sharing from the state last year. There's another three percent. And we cut. The. Fifty thousand dollars out of our ability to, to pull money out of the undesigned fund to offset taxes, so. This isn't a spending driven thing that we have control of. I just wanted to make that point clear. What we're having is, in, in my view, is we've been very good at being lean. And now we have a revenue issue. And unfortunately, I'm not sure that's going to change. State revenues are, they're very tough. They tend to take it out on municipalities. And I'm just talking about town funding, not, not county or school, which are whole. I mean, the, the threat to the Department of Education funding right now is, is scary. But just on the town side. It's explainable. It's uncomfortable, but I think that we, in order to avoid a larger increase later down, down the road, to keep. Increases less than, you know, ten percent over the next several years. Keep them in the single digits. I think this is the right tack. Again, I don't like it necessarily, but. I think this is the right tack. Um again, I don't like it necessarily, but. I don't think we have a choice really. Unless we start talking about deferring paving or cutting staff positions and that, that's a big change. Um and I'm not quite there yet. So um I talked for quite a bit. I just wanted to give you a big picture and uh I'm I'm happy to take questions or talk more about any of this. Uh at this point.
Oh, one thing I'd say is I really appreciate you um. Looking at the budget so finely and also laying like your perspective out all the way through um, you know. Twenty twenty nine and just like, I really think we're super lucky to have someone who plans so far ahead and so carefully. You know, I mean, it's not easy, I know, but I really feel like this is how we're able to like not have these. Big peaks and valleys all the time, you know, and uh to give you give you props for that.
Well, I appreciate that.
Well.
I I I will say, I wish I'd uh come to this realization like a year or two ago, but. It's it's hard to see. It's hard to see when um when you don't have a crystal ball and you don't have um uh you know audit information. Even if it's timely, i- it was hard because we had made that change in our accounting system. And and that cut the fat and the extra. I mean, we were dealing with um COVID where we had, we couldn't spend money, didn't spend money. We had a lot of money going into the undesignated fund. Um and we were pulling a lot out, um you know, and that was not inappropriate, but um I just wish we'd adjusted that rate a little bit. But the one point I wanna make on rates, speaking now about the school and the county, is that. Um with Catherine's um involvement with the budget for the county, I spent a lot more time looking at that. And and on our own, I mean, and she's been a great advocate for for keeping things low for us. Um I looked back at all those um at the 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 increases that we've seen. Uh because we have tried really hard at the town level to keep things reasonable. Um and over the past eight years, looking back to the time before COVID, when we had stable budgets in most areas. Um the town has increased about twenty two percent in eight years. Um and that's considering what happened during COVID. That's pretty responsible. That that might be around the rate of inflation. It might be less. Um but it's certainly not more. Um but what we saw commensurate with that increase was. The county budget going up almost double, ninety five percent increase on the county budget. They're less as a percentage wise than we are. They're eight percent now. Um we're sixteen to eighteen. Uh but they doubled and the school went up about thirty two percent, thirty one, thirty two percent. Um but the school unfortunately is, as you know, lion's share. Um so they increased by three hundred fifty thousand dollars last year. We're on track for two hundred thousand dollars this year. Um and and their increase was was more. So of the three components of of the tax bill, we've been the most con- constrained. Um and I I don't know if we've been too constrained or not, but uh it's looking like we're gonna have to ease up a little bit and try to catch up just a little. But I still think that all all in all, by the time everything shakes out, we will have done a very good job of keeping things. As low as possible for as long as possible. And now that we're in this phase, um we're gonna have to ramp up a little bit, but. Um I think we're gonna we're gonna have to do like what we always do and and do it responsibly. So um that's the budget.
One thing you and I talked about earlier today on the phone um was this impact to the public. So our, about five years ago, I think our average home value was at two hundred or two hundred and twenty. And we've had to keep increasing that because of the state minimum requirement so that we get our full revenue sharing that they keep making smaller, but anyway. Um so now that average is up to three hundred and thirty thousand, which means. A lot of these people who are our residents have not had salary increases, but their property has become much more worth. Worth a lot more. This is kind of like what happened in Freeport a number of years ago. All these property values went up, nobody's income went up, and now all of a sudden their taxes were. Completely out of line with what people could afford, who were just the the people who've lived in town forever. Um and I think we're trying to be very responsible to people along that line. Um so if you're looking at a sixty seven dollar increase on a a house, that's the average price in Greif Field. That comes out to six dollars a month. And I don't think that's a whole lot. Now, that's not what their tax bill is gonna go up. Their tax bill, based on what Eric said for the county and the school, you're probably looking at. Twenty dollars a month. Which is getting higher. Um and so we have to look at, how do we wanna handle municipal services? Do we wanna let the school and the county eat up all of the increase and then let our services go? And have people, you know, looking at our roads and going, well, we used to have nice roads and now they're falling apart. And you know, we used to have this service and we used to have that service. Um so I think my looking at this for six dollars a month on average. Um it's probably affordable to continue doing what Eric is proposing. Of course, we'd like it to not go up, but that's not realistic. We know that there's always gonna be inflation and. If the cost of living increased, I think it was three point four percent this year, Eric. Is that right?
Right right in there, yeah, three and a half, yes.
Um. How do we do something? And how do you plan ahead? Like Steve was saying, you've done a great job forecasting, but you can't anticipate. That our ambulance dispatch and service is gonna go up by thirty thousand, thirty or fifty this year.
Thirty this year.
Thirty thousand this year and thirty thousand next year. There's no way we could have anticipated that.
Combined with the loss of revenue sharing.
Right, that's a doubling in two years, right?
Yeah, it it's substantial and and we're doing what we can to work on that cost piece. Um you know, um and and on the twenty fourth, we're we're gonna hear from um the Winthrop Town Manager and the Ambulance Service Director. Uh to talk to to you folks directly about what that means um and why and and how and what. Uh and it's a it's a reasonable explanation. I just think we can do better um either with them or in in some cases, depending with the possibly somebody else, but. Um mostly for the dispatch side of it. The ambulance service is hard. It's a hard nut to crack, but um. Uh operations, I just I'll just jump in a little bit and say one more thing about operations. Um I did um make a a kind of sizable operational change here. Um when Chris let me know he was gonna retire, um that'll be the the third person in that position in five years. Um and uh the cemetery sexton piece of that used to be separate, uh and I'm recommending with this budget that it be separate again. Um it's hard to find someone who wants to mow lawns, hammer and nail. Um uh you know, do janitorial work and then also deal with people who who are grieving uh for um a cemetery. Uh uh related administrative work. And so um I did talk to um uh our union representatives and um. We kind of worked things out and I'd like to pull that position out. Um it's not final. I wanna get, you know, bored um buying on it, but. Uh basically what we did is we dropped a dollar an hour out of that um general services position, which had been increased because of the technical side of it, the. You know, the 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 need to be uh more of a professional in that role. Um so that uh money was then put into a stipend for a cemetery sexton. Um and I bumped it up to twenty five hundred just to make it uh more uh viable and in line with the other type of stipends that we're having. So. Uh what we did was basically um raised the budget by a five hundred dollars in net, uh but now we have a separate position. Um and that will make, I think, both of those jobs easier. Uh so I just wanted to let you know that uh and get some feedback if you had.
Can anybody apply for that? Like, could another employee apply to be the sexton?
Yes, um the the caveat would be that it would have to be done outside of their regular working hours, evenings and weekends, but. Honestly, a lot of times that's when people who are dealing with these things are dealing with them. The burials are oftentimes in the weekends, uh people work. Uh and they have to make calls in the evening, so it's not um that out of line. Um to expect that, but it could be a resident who isn't affiliated with the town at all. What I'm looking for is someone who's willing to do it for ten years uh and give that stability, because I don't believe we've been meeting the need. For the community the way we should by having constant turnover, having to train somebody every couple of years. Uh it takes them a couple of years just to get it figured out. Um so anyway, that's that's the uh the big operational change that came uh with this last draft of budget.
I wanted to mention that because I think that was the reason we pulled the sexton position into a maintenance job because it had been separate and. It it was an uncomfortable situation with. Employee who who had two jobs happening at the same time for two different kinds of pay, so.
That's correct.
So now we're gonna go back to that possibly.
Possibly. I mean, all you have to do is uh vote for it in the budget and it's good, but um I I think it's mostly an administrative piece, but I really want to vet it, so.
Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor? And we are done at seven oh five. Thank you, everyone. And we're meeting again on the twenty fourth, yes?
That's correct, yes. Yep, and it'll be a little bit more robust meeting. This one was a quickie, so.
This was robust.